Well, good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for attending today's MAP Work Session. We are ecstatic to have so many of you in the waiting room and just here in the event. We already have over 150 participants here today. So my name is Maxilia Dezier. I will be hosting today's event along with my manager Kate. So just since we have so many people and we have a limited time, I know we're going to end today at two. We can just get started. So Vanessa, if you could please change the slide. Alrighty, thank you. So um. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Maxilia Dezier. As I said, I'm a program officer at the Quality Institute. Before we dive into the agenda, I want to thank you all again for your dedication to improving birth equity in New Jersey and for your dedication to wanting to learn more about preeclampsia and addressing the issues regarding hypertension. So during today's work session, we will give you a brief overview of the Maternity Action Plan. And then we will transition to hearing from our subject matter experts. And we will be coming together at the end for a group discussion and then we'll close out the afternoon. So just a few housekeeping things. I wanted to let you all know that it's best to stay muted unless you are speaking or asking a question. You can also feel free to use that chat function to your heart's content. We ask that everyone, please take time to introduce yourself in the chat, listing your name, the organization that you are a part of, and your email address. If you were unaware, the session today is being recorded. And so we just want you to be mindful of that. And this will be then put on our company's website. So you will be able to look back and review some of that information if you are interested. So you do not need to take really, really diligent notes. You will be able to see this information again. And then engagement is highly encouraged. So if you have any questions, please do not hesitate to ask. Okay, and so for today's agenda, we're going to have an overview of the day. We are going to have a fabulous speaker, Trishawn Powells, who will be discussing her lived experience with preeclampsia. Then we will have Robin Dioria, who is from the Preeclampsia Foundation, and will be highlighting the AIM bundles, which was an initiative implemented across New Jersey hospitals. We'll then be having Shakira Williams Lindsay. She's from the March of Dimes. And she will be highlighting the March of Dimes Low-Dose Aspirin Campaign Program that they did and how that impacted preeclampsia patients. From 12:55 to 1:00 PM, we will have a five-minute speaker transition. And then we will move on to having Natasha Dravid from the Camden Coalition. She will be highlighting Safer Childbirth Cities Pilot Program and lessons learned from home birth monitoring, sorry, home blood pressure monitoring initiatives. We will then have our very own Christine Ivory, and she will be highlighting the role of nutrition-focused community programs and how that impacts preeclampsia and overall maternal equity. We will then have a Q and A session, and then there will be a group discussion facilitated by both Kate and I. Next slide, please. Okay, so the report. New Jersey Healthcare Quality Institute, in partnership with many other organizations and individuals across New Jersey, we created and released what is known as the Maternity Action Plan, which is well-known as the MAP in July 2022. So the MAP is a holistic approach to making New Jersey the safest place in the nation to give birth and raise a child. The MAP provides a directional path forward in four critical areas. And those areas are improving community-based social supports, building the maternal workforce, collecting and using data, and reforming the payment systems that are currently in place. Um, next slide, please. So in 2023, we launched MAP to Action. Like today's session, we hosted a virtual work session for each MAP section. And then we had featuring subject matter experts from various sections, including healthcare, law, community organizations, and even government. For, and then for these recordings, if you are interested or would like to know more about these resources and previous MAP events, you can actually visit our website or scan this QR code on this slide to get more information. But we have held two in-person convenings to foster networking and collaboration amongst our virtual attendees. Our planning for the first convening was shaped by conversations from virtual sessions, leading to the creation of six maternal infant health values, which you see on the slide here. And so we have continued to host virtual work sessions in the year 2025. And I truly hope that we can keep building together toward one shared goal, which is making sure that every birthing person and child in the state of New Jersey has an opportunity to thrive. Um, and before we get into our first speaker of the day, I did want to give a moment of recognition to Trishawn Powell. It is her birthday, so I want to take a moment to say happy, to wish you a very happy birthday. Thank you so much. We are honored to have you spending time with us today and sharing your journey. What a great way to celebrate your birthday. I hope that you have many more to come, and thank you so, so much.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
Oh, Vanessa, I think you can go to the next slide.
Thanks so much again. And yes, it is every season. I will start on January 3rd, 2013. None of my professional accomplishments mattered. We can go to the next slide. In that moment, all I could think about was surviving, even as my medical team told me that my daughter Mia would not. I continue to share my story because preeclampsia isn't rare. It affects 5% to 8% of all pregnancies and remains one of the leading causes of maternal mortality. Everyone here, especially the 192 people here in this virtual room, has an obligation to act. We must improve early detection, expand timely interventions, and strengthen the systems that support birthing people through and beyond pregnancy. Next slide. That day in 2013 really changed everything for me, and it's really what drives my work today. But it shouldn't take a traumatic experience for someone to learn about preeclampsia. And as you see on this slide, you should ask yourselves, do your patients know about preeclampsia? Do your community members and even friends know what preeclampsia is? Every single element of the Maternity Action Plan should be intentional. It should be rooted in the idea that each birthing person is more than a statistic. I always say to put a face to every man, woman, child, every grieving partner, every community member left asking, what happened? So at the Preeclampsia Foundation, we do a lot of work to answer those questions before they need to be asked. We ensure that what you see here on this slide, we share our patient education, our resources, our toolkits, and our outreach. They're not only evidence-based, but they create, they're created and reviewed by people like me, patients themselves, because we want to remain survivor-focused and patient-centered. And what we've come to understand is that early detection and timely intervention can truly save lives. And what we understand is that there's no way to guarantee or prevent preeclampsia research, but it shows that low-dose aspirin started after the first trimester can reduce, can really help reduce the risk in high-risk patients. I personally took low-dose aspirin beginning at 12 weeks during both my second and third pregnancies. And I did not experience at all preeclampsia in my second or my third pregnancy. And so my friend and colleague here in this space, Shakira, will share more about the clinical risk and guidance factors in just a bit. Next slide, please. So now that I've spoken a lot about the prenatal period, I want to really talk about what's equally important and often overlooked. And that's what happens after birth, which is really the postpartum period. When we talk about postpartum care, we also have to confront the uncomfortable truth about who is most at risk during and after pregnancy and why. We all know the data. We can, we can say it in our sleep. Black women are three to four times more likely to die from preeclampsia complications than white women. But what I want to share with you today is that behind those numbers are real people, real families. And I'm sitting here with you today as one of them. I'm a black woman. I'm highly educated. I advocated for myself, and yet I still was dismissed by my provider. Unfortunately, I had a high-risk pregnancy that ended with the loss of my daughter Mia, the reason why, behind why I do what I do every day. And that could have been the end of my story, but thank God it wasn't. But for too many people and too many families, especially those impacted by preeclampsia, that is their story. That is the end. We often hear black women are also 60% more likely to be even diagnosed with preeclampsia than white women. And those reasons are not just medical. They're systemic. Implicit bias, lack of diverse providers, gaps in access to care, and to be honest, policies that just don't center the lived experience of people most affected. And this is why we need more black, indigenous, and people of color represented at policy-making tables. Not just to be heard, but to lead, and that's what's most important. We need voices that push for postpartum coverage, to push for culturally relevant care, to push for family planning resources, all that are rooted in dignity and autonomy. Next slide. So these few next slides, you can keep sliding, is what we want to highlight that is just about postpartum justice and why family planning in the postpartum period is essential. And to our postpartum doulas in this space, you can go back a slide. I know that you're already having these conversations. I know you're talking with your birthing people about how to space or prevent a pregnancy, if that's their choice. And this, my health beyond pregnancy, is just that. Because we know that reducing unplanned births in the postpartum period not only improves health outcomes, but it gives families a space to heal, bond, and thrive. It empowers the birthing person and their family to define their reproductive life on their own terms. And so while we've talked about the challenges, here's what gives me hope, this next slide. This next slide shows my family, my community. As a proud member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, this image right here means so much to me. I organized my very first Somerset Preeclampsia Walk two years ago to raise awareness about preeclampsia and other hypertensive disorders of pregnancy, not just because it was important to me, but because there wasn't a walk in New Jersey that reflected my community, that reflected me. So what did I do? I created one. And for the past three years, I proudly led the Somerset Promise Walk for Preeclampsia. And it's a space that's rooted in love. It's a space that's rooted in awareness. It's a space that's rooted in care. And what you see on this slide is the power of that vision. So our Divine Nine Black-Greek Letter Organization, we stood in unity to support this very cause, to amplify awareness, to raise funds for research, and to ultimately find a cure for what's disproportionately affecting and killing pregnant black women. And that's because no one should have to die given birth. No woman, no spouse, no partner, or family should ever be left with physical and emotional scars when, in reality, this should really be one of the happiest times in their lives and, to be honest, not one that threatens their life. And changing that reality takes that, what you see in this slide here, that community, that community-centered approach, one that brings together our families, our faith-based institutions, our sororities, our fraternities, our doulas, our nonprofit leaders, and yes, our government partners. We need to move from a transactional funding to trust-based relationships. One where people feel seen, one where people feel heard, one where people feel valued. And a strong example of that is the New Jersey Maternal and Infant Health Innovation Authority, which is reshaping what it looks like for government to truly co-create with communities, to really center equity, to really invest in infrastructure, and to build lasting change for black and brown birthing people. Next slide. Organizing that Somerset Promise Walk for Preeclampsia was everything to me. It was one of the ways that I really reclaimed my story. But I couldn't stop there because I really knew that real change really meant contributing to the data, contributing to the research and policies that shape maternal healthcare. And one of the most meaningful steps I took in my journey was joining the Preeclampsia Registry. As you see here, it's a living database of preeclampsia experience from over 8,000 women affected by hypertensive disorders of pregnancy, no matter how many years you've had it. Next slide. I didn't want to just tell my story. I wanted it to be counted. I wanted researchers to study why this happened to me and to so many other women of color. Because we understand that data tells a story when it reflects our experiences. We understand that data is really incumbent upon us. And so as I start to close, I've worked with so many different legislators and different community officials, not just to support reproductive health, but also support bills like S-2503 and 83562, which aim to improve preeclampsia detection and management by requiring health insurers to cover measured blood pressure monitoring and ensure that providers offer home trainings and monitors to patients. And next slide. And as I close, I want to leave you with this. Your story matters. Sharing our experience is not just about reflection. It's about documentation, visibility, and survival. It's how we equip future mothers with the knowledge, tools, and power to advocate for themselves and how we push systems to respond with urgency and accountability. Storytelling is one of the ways that it sparks and fuels research and drives policy. But it only works if we stay involved and we show up. Thanks again to the New Jersey Healthcare Quality Institute for giving me the opportunity to share my experience, but to also share my birthday here with you all doing the work that I love the most. Thank you.
Thank you so, so much, Trishawn, and for, you know, sharing such a powerful story and talking about how you were able to use that and turn that into action. For those of you that are unaware, Trishawn Powell is a maternal health advocate and human rights leader with over 20 years of experience in state government and community-based organization. She serves on the Preeclampsia Foundation and Patient Advisory Council in his faculty with Mama's Voices. Trishawn has shared her insights nationally, including with the U.S. Chamber of Commerce and CBS News. Not that any of us should be surprised by that. I mean, her testimony was absolutely amazing. And I, before we go into the next person, I just want to say thank you again for sharing such a vulnerable story with us. The next person we have up is going to be our section with Robin Dioria and Shakira Williams. Robin Dioria is the CEO of the Central Jersey Family Health Consortium and is a recognized leader in maternal and child health with over 40 years of experience. She serves as a New Jersey Section Chair for the Association of Women's Health, Obstruction, and Neonatal Nurses. She is also president of the Preeclampsia Foundation and co-chair of the New Jersey Prenatal Quality Collaborative. So she wears many, many hats. And Robin has led and contributed to numerous national initiatives, including AIM bundles, which she will be telling us more about today, and post-birth warning sign campaigns, and is widely published in maternal health quality improvement efforts. So thank you so much, Robin. We are looking forward to hearing from you today.
Thank you so much. I, Trishawn, you're a tough act to follow. And thank you for sharing your story because it's your story that really motivates so many of us in what we do, how we do it, and the why of why we're here today, but why we do what we do. So I do have the privilege of being the president of the Board of the Preeclampsia Foundation. And Trishawn, you did a beautiful job because the Preeclampsia Foundation is an organization, a national organization, whose sole mission is to, if we can, well, not even if we can, when we can, eradicate preeclampsia and poor birth outcomes for the people of this country as well as globally. The, much of the work that we do, that we do, you've already mentioned. So I will pivot almost directly into AIM or the Alliance for Innovation in Maternal Health. AIM was actually launched back in 2014, so it has been around for a little bit now. And I did have the privilege of sitting at the table when this first started. It is a HERSA and CDC-funded initiative that actually started out of the American College of OB-GYN with the goal of improving safety and outcomes in this population. We were looking for ways to make a dramatic difference and to decrease the amount of morbidity and mortality that we see in this space, in this country. I'm preaching to the choir when I see all of the fabulous leaders and people on this call today because you all know why we're here, that the U.S. is the highest for maternal morbidity and mortality. This is not where we want to be, number one, in industrialized nations. There are many lessons to be learned from our counterparts from across the globe in how we can improve maternal health. And I am proud of New Jersey because we have taken a lead in doing just this, not only by being part of the, uh, when we started writing up the bundles with other maternal experts across the country, but also in the actual implementation of those bundles and other types of initiatives. Currently, AIM bundles, of which there are eight, are in, are being implemented in 49 states, as well as Puerto Rico and the District of Columbia, at over 2,000 birthing sites. That actually comprises over 75% of all the birthing facilities in the country. New Jersey has been a leader, and we have very much aligned our AIM bundle implementation with the work of the New Jersey Perinatal Quality Care Collaborative. The bundles themselves, if you're not familiar with them, are focused on the leading causes of morbidity and mortality in the obstetric population. They include hypertension, as well as hemorrhage, substance use disorder, decreasing of cesarean birth, a community bundle that actually speaks to the linkage between and the importance of follow-up care after the birth experience. The hypertension bundle in particular was one of the first, knowing the high incidence of preeclampsia within the country. And for us in New Jersey, it was an early bundle that we have adopted, we had adopted. The bundle itself is a set of guidelines and their recommendations of what we should see as the bare minimum of care that's being provided to our birthing people in hospital-based settings. There are four, what we call the four Rs with each bundle. Readiness, response, reporting, and systems learning, and the fourth being respectful and equitable care. Each one of those areas has a number of things or interventions within it that should be available regardless of you deliver at a intensive regional perinatal center or you deliver in a low-resource, community-based hospital. Again, it can be anywhere from the East Coast to the West Coast, whether you deliver in North Dakota or in Texas. What's important to understand is that, again, this is the bare minimum of what we should have available to us. This does not include high-tech solutions for these issues. And that's important to realize. And when we started rolling out these AIM bundles and working with our hospitals, many of them realized it's not, they don't cost money. What they cost is time and preparation and a like-mindedness of the clinicians who are caring for every person. Now, the Perinatal Quality Collaborative in New Jersey, which started back in 2017 at the New Jersey Hospital Association, and that's where the home has been, actually started implementing these bundles then, starting with hemorrhage and hypertension. And the question many people have is, well, does it work? If you go ahead and you educate your clinicians and you have some of the recommended policies and procedures that should be in place to care for a patient with one of these conditions, will you see an improvement? And the fact is, you do. In New Jersey alone, what we've seen between when we started in 2021 with the bundles that were recommended due to, based on our statistics in Jersey, we saw a decline in obstetric hemorrhage of 15.4%. So from 8.25 cases out of 100 in 2016, we were down to less than seven in '21. We saw a decrease in our cesarean section rate, a decline of 18.6%. And importantly to this discussion today, for hypertensive disorders in pregnancy, per 100 cases, we saw a drop from 8.5 cases to six cases per 100. That's a 29.4% decrease. Our hospitals, this is a voluntary effort. This is something that can be done by just accessing the website or the Alliance for Innovation in Maternal Health. All of the bundles are there. Included in the bundles are instructions on how to implement. What are some best practices to implement the bundle? What are some tools that you can use to implement the bundle? And most importantly, how do you measure? There are metrics that can be utilized so that you can see and then compare yourself to others, whether it be within the state or within your own system. So I do believe that bundles work. I can remember sitting around tables in the mid-2010s with people, like-minded people from across the country, determining what should be that bare minimum within each of these disease entities and how we should be able to address some of the appalling birth outcomes that we were seeing. New Jersey is very fortunate. In addition to Mia, we do have the Perinatal Quality Collaborative, and we have been funded by the CDC for over five years. There is a staff person, if you have not met her. Her name is Liliana Morales. She has been going hospital to hospital over the past year since she started to really speak to the nursing staff, the physician staff, to give examples of what folks are doing in other facilities, how to best implement these AIM bundles. She is there to provide support to everyone within our entire birthing community. So I do encourage you to reach out to the Perinatal Quality Collaborative, which is located through New Jersey Hospital Association. And then finally, the Preeclampsia Foundation is a resource that is, I'm, I would have to say, and I might be a little biased, but invaluable when you are looking to address the issues surrounding hypertension. They are truly, they look to assist not only our birthing population and their families, but also healthcare providers. And the third prong is research. They actually support research across the country that is working directly with or on the issue of preeclampsia. We, many of you may have just heard of new blood testing that will be available. that will be available to identify folks at risk for preeclampsia. That in part was helped along by funding through the Preeclampsia Foundation. It's a leading source of information. You can be assured that that information has been vetted through the Medical Advisory Board as well as a Patient Advisory Board, which Trey Sean mentioned earlier. And it's so important because we do need the voice of the community as we try to tackle all of the issues that are associated with hypertensive disorders. We cannot forget that a leading cause of maternal mortality nationally, as well as the state of New Jersey, continues to be cardiovascular disease, which and including hypertensive disorders of pregnancy. So I thank you for my time today. Please do not hesitate to reach out. And I will tell you, the Preeclampsia Foundation is working very closely with other associations, just which you'll hear about in a moment, the March of Dimes, because they too are promoting the use of aspirin during the prenatal period. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so, so much, Robyn. That was powerful. And just hearing the type of work that the Preeclampsia Foundation has been doing throughout the years to address hypertension and to address preeclampsia rates and just overall maternal mortality is phenomenal. And I'm, I'm seeing other people in the chat say similar things as well, like really loving what you guys have said so far. So that's amazing. And you queued up Shakira perfectly. So Shakira Williams Lindsay is the Director of Maternal Infant Health for the New York and New Jersey Market at March of Dimes, where she leads efforts to reduce maternal and infant health disparities. She's been doing this with over twenty years of experience and she has held leadership roles in reproductive health, early intervention and family support. Shakira holds an MPH from Temple University and serves on several boards and advisory committees focused on equity and maternal health. So we will now turn it over to Shakira.
That's right. Thank you so much for that warm introduction. I just, I think I have a video that we're gonna show. Maxilia? Do we have a video we're gonna show?
I'm sorry, I don't have the video, but we will make sure to put that in the replay one on YouTube. So we'll definitely have that for the replay.
Alrighty. Well, it was a video of the person who's pictured here, which is our March of Dimes brand ambassador, the eleven-time Olympian medalist, Ms. Allison Felix. And she just shared a little story, a personal story about her experience with preeclampsia. Next slide, please. So at the March of Dimes, we believe in a world where every mom and every baby is healthy regardless of their wealth, race, gender, or their geography. Yet today in the United States, as Robyn mentioned, far too many face barriers for a healthy pregnancy and a healthy birth outcome. We have very two clear goals. One is to end preventable maternal health risk and death. And the other is to end preventable preterm birth and infant death. And we know to do this, we must end the health equity gap. Next slide. Staying in alignment with one of our goals, our why is to end preventable maternal health risk and death. And as you see here in the graph, the maternal mortality has declined in, had declined in two thousand and twenty-three. However, still, the rate among Black women is over two point seven, the overall rate in the United States. So that's a factor that we'd like to continue to work on, as you can see here on our graph. Next slide. Thank you. Hypertensive disorders of pregnancy include preeclampsia, pre-pregnancy hypertension, gastro gestational hypertension, including preeclampsia and eclampsia. And the data that we have is derived from the National Center for Health Statistics. The analysis followed methods described in the article, which will be available for everyone. The evaluation of US state-level variation in hypertensive disorders of pregnancy. And I really wanted to focus on something that the graph indicates, which is the prevalence of hypertensive disorders of pregnancy. And it has increased by seventy-four percent since two thousand and fifteen from twenty, from seven point three to twelve point seven in all live births. This dataset allows for state-level comparison rates amongst hypertensive disorders for pregnancy of all live births. Next slide, please. And just highlighting and uplifting what we have in some of our blocks here that one in eight pregnancies impacted by hypertensive disorders of pregnancy and twenty-seven percent of all preterm births are associated with hypertensive disorders of pregnancy. Next slide, please. It's a little skewed, but I'm gonna read off the slide for you just to level set us with a definition, which some of my colleagues have already talked about. But preeclampsia is defined as an elevated blood pressure after twenty weeks of pregnancy with clinical signs that one's brain, liver, and kidneys are not functioning properly. The onset of preeclampsia can happen from the twentieth week of pregnancy through sixth week of postpartum. We've talked a little bit about some of the risks of preeclampsia to moms and infants being for moms maternal seizures, stroke, organ damage, particularly with the kidneys and the liver, increased chronic hypertension, lifelong increase of cardiovascular and renal disease, which is important to note that when you think about preeclampsia or eclampsia, it's just not that case in time. It can have lifelong effects. And I mean, in string case, in cases, we can even have maternal death. And some of the risks for our infants and our babies, insufficient blood flow to their placenta leading to low birth weight, preterm birth, and in severe cases, possibly a death or childbirth. Next slide, please. So what are our solutions? The science behind low dose aspirin. We heard Robyn talk about it. We heard Trey Sean talk about it. And as you can see here on the slide, we have some low dose aspirin that is currently recommended for individuals by high-risk, who are at high risk or moderate risk for preeclampsia during pregnancy. And we have some heavy hitters here. The American College of Obstetrics and Gynecologists, US Preventive Task Force. You have it all here. And you also know that despite benefits, low dose aspirin is generally underutilized. And that's very unfortunate. We know that there's a lack of awareness of this simple life-saving intervention. Next slide, please. So let's talk a little bit about the, the purpose of our campaign at the March of Dimes. It's coined Low Dose Big Benefits. And the campaign is to really mitigate the adverse effects of preeclampsia and at-risk pregnancy to different individuals by implementing a multi-pronged initiative focused on inclusion, the awareness of using low dose aspirin campaigns to reduce the negative impacts of preeclampsia. The goal is to amplify awareness among health professionals and individuals of childbearing age on the risk factors associated with preeclampsia. So when you think about, why is March of Dimes doing this work? March of Dimes has a legacy since nineteen thirty-eight of funding research to help millions of babies survive and thrive. From Napoleon to preterm birth, our organization's researchers have a long history of making critical discoveries to solve some of the biggest issues facing moms and babies. So let's go for a historical journey a little bit. In two thousand and eleven, the March of Dimes launched the Prematurity Research Center at Stanford, which is the nation's first and center dedicated for identifying cause of preterm birth. The organization then went on to create prematurity campaigns, ROMAD, in two thousand and fifteen that identified eight interventions that could reduce preterm birth and include low dose aspirin. In two thousand and twenty-one, led by the faculty and staff at the California Maternal Quality Collaborative, the Stanford PRC invested a low, in a low dose aspirin initiative and began to move from research to actual implementation. So that brings you to today, where we're doing the implementation phase of this low dose aspirin campaign. Next slide, please. Now let's talk about some of the benefits of low dose aspirin. We talked a little bit about it during Trey Sean and Robyn, but I wanted to highlight for you. Some of these benefits include reduced risk, obviously, of preeclampsia, improved blood flow, potential reduction of what we work on a lot at March of Dimes, which is preterm birth, and lowering the severity of preeclampsia and potentially cardiovascular benefits for the pregnant person. But we are facing barriers. We know that there's several barriers that might prevent high-risk patients from taking low dose aspirin as a preventative measure. And, and some of that of studies really bubbled up, the lack of awareness. The lack of awareness for healthcare providers as well as our prescribing practices. And you can understand that there are other barriers such as language and cultural barriers. And we wanted to, at March of Dime, address some of these barriers. So if you wouldn't mind, go into the next slide, please. We have three core components listed here. Ongoing key components of the campaign will educate healthcare professionals, including OB-GYNs, midwives, pharmacists, and on the benefits of low dose aspirin, which many of them already know that we're just making sure that we are training our healthcare providers and practitioners, as well as our pharmacy professionals. We're implementing quality improvement protocols and educating pregnant people and their families and the public. And this is very important because we don't want the onus to be only on the pregnant person and the birthing person. We want to make sure that the entire network that, that's supporting them also have this education. Because when I was pregnant, I know sometimes I wouldn't remember everything to discuss. I was happy to have my husband or my mom or my sister there with me. And that's why it's important to educate not just the pregnant person, but also their support system. I know I come from an era where it's each one teach one. And if you know something, you don't keep it to yourself. You share it with someone else so that they can know that bit of information as well. Next slide, please. Now I have resources for everyone. You have a QR code here. Maxilia and Kate, they also have these items for you and they're gonna share them. But if you need them, please let me know. You can go to the QR code and, and download them yourself, or I can make sure I send them to you. But what you have here, these are the resources for consumer education. We have them in Spanish as well as English. So we want to make sure that it gets out to everyone. Next slide, please. And here we have our resources for professionals. We have a free, and I wanna say this again, a free-to-you e-learning module where any healthcare practitioner to scan this QR code, you can go and have this information sent to you. And you can take the one-hour course and you can earn your CMEs, CNEs, and so forth and so on. So I want to make sure that you all know about this. Very exciting. We also have your, for the professionals and some of our practitioners, we have posters that you can hang in your, your clinics. And you can also make sure that you have this screen, the screening tool to make sure that you're planning to incorporate this and implement this with all of your clients and all of your patients. Next slide, please. And we have additional resources for some of our professionals and our partners. We want to make sure that this information is delivered to you and that it's shared with your clients. Again, screen, educate, prescribe. These are the things that can help save lives. These are the things that Trey Sean talked about and how important it was for her practitioner to become aware of what was going on so that it wouldn't continue. Next slide, please. Now, of course, wow, this is an interesting-looking slide, but I'll read off for you. In court, of course, the March of Dime staff, we have important roles of getting this message out to our public, like I'm doing today. The Low Dose Big Benefits Campaign, but we cannot do this alone. We need your participation to be successful. And this is how you can help us. You can help to educate and help us spread the word. Tell others about the Low Dose Big Benefits and encourage them to learn more. You can make a donation and leverage the campaign to drive revenue. Any donation that we take goes towards our research and making sure that we can do some implementation. And also, one of my big things is advocacy. Take action to make a difference. You can join the March of Dimes Advocacy Network because to stay involved, you need to know how to become involved. The Advocacy Network is listed here. We also can get it out to you in a different format. But it's important that if you're going to help advocate for a cause and push our legislators and our lawmakers to make sure that this is something that we do on a regular basis, advocacy is very important. And we also would love to partner. Invite other stakeholders to amplify our message and help join the cause, join this movement. Next slide, please. In closing, building on the March of Dimes' long history of health research and innovation, combined with the overwhelming amount of data that shows how efficient low dose aspirin can improve maternal and infant health outcomes. Our Low Dose Big Benefits Campaign will expand to increase awareness to our families across the entire United States and to help turn the tide of the maternal and infant health crisis. I conclude with that slide. If we have the video, I'd love to show it. If not, I'm going to yield to our mistress of ceremony here.
Sorry, I was muted. Unfortunately, we do not have the video, but if you could send that over to us again, we can send that out again to all of the attendees that attended today. My apologies.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. And then I will pass it over to Kate, who will be introducing the next group of people. Or, or we have speakers.
Thank you so much, Max. And Shakira, thank you so much. I, it wouldn't be a webinar without technical difficulties. And so I know some of the slides were showing up a little bit weird, but we've got the full PDF. And so we'll make sure that everyone has all of the resources that were shared today, plus many more, including our slide deck and presentation. So you won't miss any of it. But I think the words that have been shared so far, well beyond the slides, are really what's impactful. And I'm so excited to be taking the baton from Max and shifting our perspective just a little bit to think more about community alignment. So with that, I'll introduce our next speaker. Today we have with us Natasha Dravid from the Camden Coalition. Natasha joined that coalition in two thousand and thirteen and currently serves as the Chief Strategy Officer there, working to drive forward the Camden Coalition's mission of strengthening ecosystems of care in Camden and the state of New Jersey, as well as across the country. In this role, she leverages over a decade of experience in complex care, clinical redesign and data-driven practice, spanning a wide range of clinical and social focus areas. She brings deep expertise in operationalizing innovation projects that bring together CBOs, providers, payers, policymakers, and community members to reimagine healthcare delivery. She holds an MBA from the Yale School of Management and a BA in English from Haberford College. Natasha, so glad to have you, and I'll turn things over to you.
Thank you, Kate. Thanks, everyone. Nice to be here today. And thank you to our previous speakers for those really great and informative presentations. We can go to the next slide. So the Camden Coalition, for those of you who don't know us, we are a multidisciplinary, community-based organization based in the city of Camden. um, with a goal of improving care for people with complex health and social needs. Um, we also serve as one of New Jersey's four regional health hubs. Um, and in that role, we, um, report into the state's Medicaid Office, um, and serve a number of purposes. So we develop and test innovative models of care. Um, we convene partners and work alongside the state to, on shared priorities. Um, and we also operate, uh, regional health information exchanges so that all of our work is informed by regional data. And we'll talk a little bit more about that moving forward. Next slide. So today I'll talk a little bit about the Safer Childbirth Cities model, um, and some of our lessons learned specifically as they relate to blood pressure management. Next slide. Great. So our work in the Safer Childbirth Cities pilot really started with many years, um, of observing that in our local and regional emergency rooms, um, through our health information exchange, which aggregates that data, um, of who's going in and out of the hospital. We saw high numbers of individuals who are going to the emergency room. We could see that they had an evident, uh, evidence of pregnancy, but not yet evidence of being connected to prenatal care. So we really saw this as an opportunity. These are individuals who, from the data, we knew were pregnant. Um, and we also knew that in the emergency room, which is a busy environment, there's a lot of different, very critical workflows going on. There wasn't always a clear, um, protocol for how to get that person connected to prenatal care. They might get a phone number, um, and be encouraged to initiate that care, but that was all. And so individuals are leaving the ER, um, with that really big opportunity of maybe strengthening a transition of care to make sure they got connected. So, on the next slide, um, our reaction to this opportunity, um, was really to think about, how can we develop a workflow that instead of just sending individuals back out into the community, we could warmly invite them into care, um, and provide that extra support in that really critical moment of early pregnancy? So the Camden Coalition has a lot of experience running, um, interventions in the community, um, building trust and trying to establish these supportive workflows. So we said, what if we could work with our local, um, OB offices and other community-based organizations? And every single day, monitor the list of who are these individuals who are pregnant, um, visiting the ER and don't yet have that connection to prenatal care? And create that warm outreach to those individuals to say, hey, can we help you, um, get connected to the resources that you need? Whether that's a prenatal appointment, other connections to, to pregnancy care, or even social resources. Through that pilot, we were able to, um, to work with six different partners in our community in South Jersey, um, and provide those providers with access to a small budget. So they had a flexible patient cost fund, which they could use to offer things like transportation, maybe, um, a gift card for food resources, or diapers, or to offset the cost of childcare, or parking, or medication. Um, so giving providers the opportunity, when they had that individual on the phone, to say, what are the needs that are coming up for you right now? And how can we help you prioritize getting this, um, timely connection to prenatal care? So again, the goal of that was really to say, we can be inviting folks into care, creating stronger referral pathways, um, both, you know, for, for folks to get into prenatal care, but also what are the other resources in our community? And how do we make sure our OB offices, um, and other CBOs are aware of how to make those connections? So that was the model. The next slide really, um, shows the workflow and how we operationalize data to make this happen. So our health information exchange, again, aggregates data from all of our regional health systems. Um, and so every day we were getting that list from thirteen different emergency rooms, um, with flags that showed us who was pregnant, um, and didn't yet have that connection. The Camden Coalition in the pilot phase would review that list. And then based on our six provide, our six, uh, community-based outreach sites that we already had on board, we could review that data, um, and assign those individual phone calls to the appropriate out outreach site. So we would look at things like, did they have a previous pregnancy that was managed by one of those sites? Or, um, we could refer them to the OB office affiliated with the emergency room that they visited. Um, we could also in that, at that time, um, write a brief note around what was going on for the patient. So we could, we had the time on our end to read through those notes and what we call triage the patient. So give the outreach team a little bit of information about what was going on for the patient so they could tailor their conversation. The process of building the capacity of all of us to understand, how do we have these conversations? Um, you know, in our healthcare system, most, um, perinatal interventions happen at the point that somebody initiates prenatal care on their own, right? So we're calling people before the healthcare system officially knows they're pregnant. So that can be a very, um, sensitive conversation. We are, um, it's early in pregnancy, so we're, we might be seeing, um, early pregnancy loss, potential miscarriage. We might be seeing, um, you know, folks trying to get connected to abortion care. Um, and so we did a lot of work to, to work with our sites to both, um, develop those outreach scripts and then, uh, provided, um, continuous coaching on how do we have these conversations? Um, in, you know, in a really supportive way that kind of, um, acknowledges the complexity of that moment. So once the outreach sites got their daily list of folks to call, they would, um, do that outreach, have that conversation, and they would all, um, they would be able to kind of, uh, provide that connection to an appointment, but also assess their needs for transportation, other social, um, needs. And they would document that information right back into our health information exchange. So across the region, we were collecting this data every day, both of who's going to the ER and then what was the outcome of that phone call. On the next slide, um, this is a little bit of what we learned, um, in that first full year of the pilot. So in 2022, we identified, um, over two thousand people that met that criteria. And you can see, um, from the map on the left, uh, really while the kind of gravity of our, uh, of the intervention started in Camden City, as we expanded it out to all of those ERs, we were really covering a, a broad, uh, swath of South Jersey. You can see that the vast majority of the individuals that we identified were in the first trimester, which again, we know that prenatal care, um, is one of the most powerful interventions we can offer, um, to help mitigate poor outcomes. And so we're really excited that our data was able to identify so many folks early in pregnancy that we'd have the opportunity, um, to proactively support. And then you can see that number four hundred and fifty of those individuals had, um, a diagnosis of hypertension. So they're not yet in prenatal care. This is a pre-existing, um, diagnosis. So right off the bat, we know there's opportunity here to, to kind of start that conversation about how do we do, how do we manage? How do we think about prevention of preeclampsia? So moving on, um, to talk a little bit about some of the opportunities that emerged from our pilot, we can go to the next slide. The first is that you saw that data from 2022. Um, this workflow was, um, so powerful and we really saw so much benefit from it that we've actually, um, been able to work with the Cooperative, um, down here in South Jersey, as well as Ascenda. Both of those organizations run Connecting NJ Teams, whose daily work is to support individuals in pregnancy, um, to make sure they're connected to the resources that they need. So those organizations in South Jersey are continuing that workflow every day, making those outreach calls. Um, they're using data from our health information exchange to do this. And we see while our initial pilot model was really, we're going to outreach everybody, um, who meets the criteria, we see opportunity to think about additional flags that we can add into those workflows so that we have, um, you know, specific workflows tailored to people who have hypertension. There's obviously other, um, diagnoses that that could be applied to, but we think hypertension, um, as an early identification, um, strategy through this workflow is a, a very real possibility that we could be, um, implementing. The other opportunity that we're seeing, not just, um, through Safer Childbirth Cities, but through our whole portfolio of, of work, is that there's opportunity to work more closely with, um, patients in the home or in the community, um, to build out those self-management strategies. So this, this isn't new, but during COVID, we really started the process of, how do we make sure that folks have what they need at home when it wasn't safe? Or it was difficult to get to those prenatal appointments? Um, if you had other kids to take care of, there were just so many restrictions that we said, let's make sure folks have the ability, um, to do some of this, uh, prevention, preventive work at home, including home, home-based blood pressure monitoring. That's something that, again, we've started to explore, um, in other populations across the Camden Coalition as well. And we started to learn more about what are the barriers and what are the opportunities, um, to really, um, effectively scale interventions like this. And one of the things that we, um, encountered is that it's actually not as easy as it could be for patients to actually access that home, uh, that blood pressure cuff for the home. So I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. Um, and then we've also done some work to think about, how can we, um, implement workflows in the home that work on that specific patient's, um, um, hypertension care plan, right? So, so thinking about what medications are they on? Do they need support with, um, getting, uh, changes made to their prescriptions? Feedback to their providers? Um, and then also doing, um, more education and training in the home on how do you use these cuffs? How do you document it? How do you know when to reach out to your provider for extra support? So on the next slide, I'll talk a little bit, um, about the blood pressure cuff. So this is, um, something we've, we've been working on, again, across programs. And we've been following, um, the experience of our patients. And we figured out that in New Jersey, um, because blood pressures are considered a durable medical, um, benefit, it's actually not that easy for patients, once they get a script from their provider, um, to go procure that blood pressure cuff in the community. Um, so while those cuffs are generally covered by insurance, if a patient goes to the pharmacy, just like they might for a glucometer or test strips for diabetes, um, the pharmacy can't bill insurance, and so the patient might believe that that benefit isn't covered. So that can be a cumbersome process for patients. And we noticed that that often ends up, um, in patients either paying out of pocket or in many cases, not getting that blood pressure cuff at all. On the next slide, um, I know I have a lot of friends from our managed care organizations, um, on the line and very much are, are plugged in and have been amazing partners in this work. But we, um, really to try and get to the bottom of this, we spent some time shadowing our patients, um, and, and putting our own care managers on this, um, on this project to see what are the barriers? What's really happening when a patient goes through the steps to try to obtain that blood pressure monitor? So, um, we tested this out with twenty-one members across three different plans. Um, and as you can see here, there were multiple steps. The average, uh, wait time was twenty-seven minutes with up to two transfers. Out of twenty-one attempts, and again, this is with our own care managers, only four were successful, um, in getting that blood pressure cuff. Um, sometimes there is confusion around the process, even on the MCO side or on the, the durable medical side. And so we just see a lot of opportunity to streamline this process, better understand it, and make sure we're supporting patients, um, in this really simple intervention that is already covered, right? So a lot of work to do there and, um, excited to keep working on that with the state and with our partners at Managed Care. And then finally, on the last slide, um, just to talk a little bit about one of the, um, the interventions we've been running, not in the Perinatal Cooperative, but has some applicable learnings. Um, we've been sending nurses and community health workers out into the homes of folks that we identify, again, in our health information exchange, um, with stage-two or greater hypertension. Um, and we have seen that with that simple intervention of providing education, providing that one-time medication reconciliation, getting patients the home, um, blood pressure cuff, and then trying to build a productive feedback loop to primary care. We're seeing a lot of engagement and our early data is showing that we are, um, seeing better management of hypertension. So I'll stop there and hand it back to Kate.
Natasha, thank you so much. That was, um, such an interesting view of all the work that you've done and, and really fascinating data to accompany. And it seems like, um, there's still steps that we can all be taking together to make sure people can get the resources, um, and care that they need and equipment at home. So thank you. Um, I, we are going to tr- transition now to our last speaker, whom I'm so excited to introduce, but just a couple of reminders of what's upcoming after that. Um, we will have opportunity for questions and answers with all of our, our panels today. Um, and so if you'd like to go ahead and put those questions into the chat, we are certainly, I'm taking notes of all of them. And so Max and I will be reading all of those aloud. We'll also give opportunity for folks to raise their hand and ask questions live. So just a, a heads up of what is to come. But I am, with that, um, excited to transition to our next speaker, whom I have the pleasure to introduce, but also the pleasure to work with every day at the Quality Institute. Um, so please join me in welcoming Christine Ivory, MPHCHES. She is a program officer with us at the Quality Institute. And she advances maternal infant health in everything that she does, including, um, leading our work for team birth. With a strong background in public health, um, programming and leadership, Christine's committed to improving outcomes for Black mothers and infants. She holds a degree from Norfolk State and Drexel University, and she's been recognized as a TEDx speaker, APHA awardee, and the Drexel Forty Under Forty Honoree. So glad to have Qualit, uh, Christine here with you and to share her expertise with everyone today. So Christine, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Kate. Um, I want to say. Can everyone hear me well? Kate, can you hear me?
Yes, you're good.
Doing a sound check there. Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Kate, thank you so much. I want to say thank you to, um, my team over at the Quality Institute for really just raising awareness around these topics today. Also, I want to say, um, thank you to my fellow Trail Blazers here on the line, uh, the fellow panelists and the speakers that talked today. Um, it's, it's so great to hear about the wonderful work and the resources that are happening throughout the state of New Jersey and beyond. And then also a lot of the champions here in the audience here, um, that are working towards such great things. And I've been able to communicate with a couple of you, um, in the chat. And, um, it's just really great to see everyone today. Um, for the presentation, and mine will be relatively short, we're going to talk about upstream approaches to health. And we're calling it upstream because we're thinking about preventability behind this. We're thinking about food access and this intersection of maternal child health, as well as how it relates right into, uh, preeclampsia. And so we'll be looking today into, um, some existing programs in New Jersey, but then we'll also take a moment to, uh, think through some solutions for the future. So thank you, Vanessa, on the slides there. Um, first, I just wanted to level set. We're thinking about some of the topics as we relate to food justice and food security. And what does that look like when we paint this big picture here in front of us and look at it from a coll- uh, a collaborative and a comprehensive view? So first, starting with a, a quick definition of food insecurity. It's, it occurs when a family, household, um, or person has limited access to enough food. Um, and, and it's also uncertain of where their next meal will come from. And we know from data that was represented from the New Jersey Maternal and Health Outcomes Report, um, that's actually recently published in 2025. It shares that over in 2022, that over nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, uh, individuals across the state of New Jersey, and that's nearly about eleven percent of the population in our state, have experienced food insecurity. And that's also a two percent increase from 2018. Um, I also want to define hunger. And hunger is a prolonged and voluntary lack of food that results in discomfort, illness, weakness, um, pain that goes beyond that usual or uneasy sensation. And food insecurity, or food security rather, at the bottom here is what we all work towards, um, as we, um, serve our communities, which is access for all people at all times to enough food, uh, so that everyone can have a best quality of life or an active and healthy life. One definition that's not here that I do want to raise is food justice. And food justice is a concept that promotes equitable access, uh, for healthy and affordable and culturally appropriate food for all people, uh, regardless of their race, their income, their geographic location, their social economic status. And so these are the points that we definitely want to raise as we go into this conversation around food. Uh, we can go into the next slide. All right. So for the next slide, we're thinking through about that impact of food insecurity and how it directly is in relation to maternal and child health. I do want to raise, before getting into this particular slide, about place and space. Uh, we know throughout our state and throughout the nation that food deserts certainly exist and certainly impact, uh, quality of life. Uh, we see this, um, throughout our data with low-income communities that are affected disproportionately. And those food deserts, um, are limited access to those grocery stores, supermarkets, healthful food that are, um, really consistent with low-calorie dense food. healthful food that are really consistent with low-calorie dense food or have minimal processed food, balanced and nutrition, nutrient-rich food as well. So looking at the information in front of us, I pulled this from the report that I mentioned on our last slide, the New Jersey Maternal Health Infant Outcomes Hunger Food Security and Social Determinants of Health Report. And they identified four different areas where food insecurity directly impacts maternal health. And what they looked at was accessibility. So thinking about access and affordability of food for New Jerseyans across the state, as well as travel time, we're thinking about transportation, the amount of time that it will take for parents, for children, for our families to get the food that they need and to get to those food retailers to actually purchase the food. Also, the availability. I just mentioned place and space. We're thinking about food deserts in this whole collective of holistic views and food. So knowing that food access is available in our communities, we know is substantially important. And then lastly, pricing, thinking about the pricing of food and the, once again, the affordability, which ties back with our first point. Now, what I wanted to funnel down to the bottom of this slide with is health outcomes. So with lack of accessibility or challenges or barriers around transportation or accessibility and pricing, we know that there are certain outcomes that can be impacted around the maternal health sphere. Some around preterm birth, which I know Shakira raised earlier with Marcha Dimes, talked about how preterm birth is a direct component around preclampsia. And we know that preterm birth is a baby that is born before that 37 weeks of gestation. Then we also have gestational diabetes that falls under this realm, diabetes during pregnancy. Preclampsia, of course, outlined in our conversations today. Other chronic disease such as heart disease. And we can't forget when we think about conditions, when we think about the state of well-being, mental health, and how that plays into this component as well. So depression and anxiety are certainly at a higher risk for those who are impacted by food insecurity in this realm as well. And we can go into the next slide. So what we wanted to do, just thinking through some of the upstream approaches and what is actually happening across the state. These are a few, and I know that there are so, so many. And I invite you all to drop them in the chat as I'm going through and I'm sharing just a few of these highlights. But we know that there's a lot of great work happening across the state, within our hospitals and health systems, within our community organizations, the food banks. And so we'll just take a moment to highlight a few. Starting at the right top-hand corner, we have Virtua. They have their Eat Well Mobile Grocery Store. This touches Camden and Burlington County. One impactful, or even more so impactful thing about this food distribution plan that they have is that they also involve pediatric services and incorporate that and integrate it into their mobile unit and their care. Down below in the right-hand corner, we have Ooh Jamaz Cafe and, and refrigerators that are found in community in Newark, New Jersey. And this initiative is spread out through all the city where individuals can pick up meals. And those meals are also customized. And I know that they even serve individuals that have issues around hypertension and have issues around diabetes as well. I wanted to highlight on the far end of the side of the screen here, Crops, also known as Communities Revolutionizing Open Public Spaces. And this is down in Atlantic County in New Jersey. They have a food hub. They have a YouCan program that helps to uplift economic stability and shows others around agriculture of how they can grow their own food. And also they have farmers markets and community gardens and beautify spaces in Atlantic County. During the pandemic, I had the opportunity to work with them through the cooperative in South Jersey, where this particular program provided stipends and home grow programs where pregnant women and birthing people could grow their own produce at home and have the education behind it to know how to grow their food and how to, to use their food as well. In spirit of food pharmacy, this touches Cumberland and Gloucester and Salem County. They work together with the food banks to be able to have a pharmacy on campus to preserve or to share out food. And then lastly, in Bergen New Bridge, the Taste and Learn Program, they have cultural, they have cultural celebrations around their food that raises awareness to others' traditions and really just involves the community in these aspects of learning about new food. So we can go to the next slide. So the next slide is actually our last slide. As we continue to wrap up here, we're thinking about key considerations. How can we move forward and collaborate together to advance and sustain all these different actions? So first, looking into equitable access for families. So how can we meet families where they are, keeping the whole family in mind? We know that pregnant person, the parents, all of the whole continuum of everyone in the family need to be touched in this, in this manner with the equitable access of food. So thinking about how can we sustain that access and meet individuals in the, where they are in community? And that next point really leads into that same type of theme here, supporting community-based strategies. I just mentioned community gardens, farmers markets, community fridges, even seed sharing programs and home growing kits, retail stores that are providing these different type of nutritious, nutrient-rich support around food justice is so important. So making sure that we can support these, these organizations that are already doing great work and link arms in community. And then increased collaboration and referral processes. I think Natasha did an excellent job just speaking to Camden Coalition's referral pipeline. How can we make sure and ensure that parents that we are working with that are at risk of preclampsia or that have preclampsia, that they have what they need? How are we looking at these pipelines to make sure that it leads back to that, that they make sure to think of the resources that they need? We're also thinking about our partnerships, our food banks, WIC, SNAP, collaboratives that already exist once again, and connecting and linking arms. Our last two points at the bottom here, promoting cultural appropriate education and screening. So when it is appropriate, making sure that we have resources that connects all of these holistic services together. So if we have a food distribution program, if we have food boxes that are being shipped, is there a way that we can incorporate blood pressure screenings in this? Is there a way that we can have a glucose or blood sugar screened in this for those who are at risk of diabetes and different comorbidities? So we're thinking about that. Once again, holistic approach, screening, but then also providing that education that is culturally sensitive. And then lastly, policy efforts. From a national perspective, we do see different policies and programs such as Food is Medicine, which is integrated in the healthcare, providing food prescriptions, medically tailored meals and groceries, and counseling. We know in the state of New Jersey, there are great bills that are established, such as the S2916, special nutrition programs around WIC and farmers markets that are established to help to provide and amplify food distribution for, for partners and for parents out there. So those are just a few that are listed out. I look forward to more conversations around this and how we can really center the social needs and social determinants. And that's around that food access, accessibility, and around that sustainability as well. So thank you, everyone.
Christine, thank you for, for those remarks and for being the last of an amazing lineup of speakers today. I think we are all overwhelmed but energized by all of the expertise that was shared. So I'm going to have Vanessa take down the slides. And we would welcome everyone to jump into a robust discussion with us. I have been jotting down all of the questions in the chat box. And so I'm going to start firing those toward our speakers. By all means, I'll address them to an individual, but anyone is welcome to jump in and respond. I'd also welcome everyone who's here, and I know that there are many of us. If you'd like to ask your question live, we would love to have a voice other than Max and I asking the question. So please feel free to raise your virtual hand and Max will be monitoring and calling on folks that way. We did, in case you get confused by who's responding to questions, I did want to say we had to do a switch out with Camden Coalition. Natasha got pulled into a meeting with the state. And these days, it's hard to miss those. And so we've got Lee here, who's also an expert from Camden Coalition to share in responses as well. So thank you so much, everyone. I'll just jump right in. So going back toward the beginning, Robin, I'm wondering if you could tell us a little bit more about how some of the AIM bundle data is reported? Is it possible to have it disaggregated by race, particularly looking at the Black African-American population? Or to understand by hospital and where the AIM bundles have been implemented?
So the, right now, part of Liliana's job, if you will, is to actually go hospital, hospital, to really assess what bundles have been implemented, where they are in implementation, and what the success is. The data that was reported was just through 2021. And that is all that's available right now through NJHA, which is aggregate data. But I am going to bring back to them the interest in having it parsed out by race, ethnicity, and some other demographics, et cetera.
Thank you. Is there a list or a place people can know whether their hospital is participating in a particular AIM bundle? Is that publicly available data?
It's not publicly available data, to my knowledge. But really, it would go directly to the hospital leadership. In particular, nursing is often at the lead that we found in each of the hospital's labor and delivery staff. Most of the bundles are focused in the intrapartum period. There are postpartum components as well, but that would be going directly. And if they don't know what a name bundle is, what a fabulous opportunity. Because at that point, and when the slides go out, I will provide some links for everybody on the call today to be able to access them. So I would, and if I could just comment, Kate, Ashley, I cannot agree more because all of our data through maternal mortality, review committee, the consortia data, and I speak for all of us, we do break out all of our data, all of our metrics are based, are broken out by race, ethnicity. And it's incredibly important because depending on how you're going to tackle the issues that you're focusing on, they may be very different for one population, for one community to the next. So that is the beauty of the consortia because we do know our communities. But more importantly, we do know our communities based on some of these specific metrics such as race, ethnicity. So I can't agree more, culture, et cetera.
Yeah, I think you've got agreement across the board from everyone here that all of that is so essential. And any ability that we have to report that data publicly, I saw a note in the chat that it would be nice if some of this information was available on the hospital report card. So this is all, all great takeaways. And so thank you. We'll share more about the AIM bundles in the follow-up email to everyone. I also see a couple of questions related to access to those blood pressure cuffs. And so, Lee, I don't know if you're able to answer this, or anyone on the call is welcome to. But are people, if their, if their Medicaid is not accepted to get the blood pressure cuff? There was a question that came in as to whether an FSA account could be used to fund a blood pressure cuff.
Yes. Hi, everyone. Thank you for letting me sub in. I saw that question in the chat and I, I don't know because it hasn't been applicable to the population we work with. We've been really, our objective has been to get it fully reimbursed or to get free blood pressure cuffs. But it's a great question. I'd imagine the answer is yes. And I don't know if anyone else on the call has more information on that.
Kate, if I could just, and I put it in the chat, there are currently, a bit, there's a bill before the Senate as well as the Assembly that speaks directly to Medicaid reimbursement for blood pressure cuffs, currently being, and they're all within some part of the process of getting that through. But the legislators were, they heard loud and clear the need for this and are with us as far as trying to put this forward to make it a non-issue as far as cost.
Great. Thank you. And thank you for dropping the information in there about the Preclampsia Foundation blood pressure cuffs. I do see confirmation from a participant here. All thanks for sharing both FSA and HSA accounts can be used to purchase blood pressure cuffs for those who are commercially insured and have access to those types of accounts. I see also a note, it wouldn't be a MAP work session if we didn't put Helen Hanigan on the spot. So Helen, I see that you dropped information about your access to equipment that you're sharing. Can we have you share a little bit more about that?
Yeah, sure. And hi, everybody. Glad to be here. I am really proud to partner, as Natasha mentioned, with the Coalition and Lee on the making sure that our, our providers across South Jersey, but certainly across all of New Jersey as well, have access to Go Kits, which Natasha mentioned and did come through some work that we did. Christine was a historic leader at FHA related to our prematurity prevention initiative. So many of the things that she talked about, she left behind with us to, to continue in that effort. So in collaboration with all of the consortia, the Prematurity Prevention Initiative, in addition to several other efforts, makes kits with self-monitoring tools, including blood pressure cuffs that have multiple sizes of the cuff sleeve to address any issues that might come up for individuals who have larger arm size through providers. One of the important priorities of Prematurity Prevention Initiative is that the connection between provider and patient is at the center of all the strategies that we deploy. And so making those resources available through the provider sites and then reinforcing the communication of any measures of concern with the doctor's office or clinic is something that we, we continue to do and to offer. I'm going to drop into the general chat, the website for the Broad Prematurity Prevention Initiative, and be very happy. Yeah, we also have PulseOx and as well as, as, as for some folks, we've had the diabetes test trips and the other materials. So we've been flexible as, we started in COVID, so flexibility was the name of the game. And as different strategies have been brought up through our clinical leadership teams and other efforts that we partner with all of the great organizations here to identify, to, to add those in. Those are made available both through the prenatal sites as well as during, for families who are in the, who have children in the NICU, so that we can be sure that we're, we're really anticipating any future needs that the parents might have for self-management and, and paying attention to their own well-being, while also caring for often a very fragile infant.
Thanks. It's so nice to hear that these initiatives have been able to last much longer than the COVID pandemic and are really impactful and, and positive outcomes for both the pregnant person and the, the baby. So glad we're able to share all of these resources. Shakira, I have a question that came in the chat for you. I know that you are, you were able to share the electronic versions of many of these patient and provider-facing materials. Is there a way that people are able to get hard copies so that they can have them within their office spaces or community orgs?
Yes. Hi, thank you for that question. There is a way. You can contact me. They can contact me because we do have different initiatives going on throughout Marcha Dimes. One is a quality improvement team that's going throughout the United States. And we are talking to healthcare providers and practitioners and talking to them about different packages that they can have from Marcha Dimes to utilize. So the short answer is yes.
Thank you. An additional question just came in. Are those who are not medical providers, for example, duelists who are working the community, able to help their clients get blood pressure monitors or purchase some of their own to have available? Is there a pathway that anyone would recommend that they go down in order to have blood pressure monitors available?
I'd say we'd certainly be happy to, to talk about that. I think as much as we can use the information, and I know Lee would lean into this, that, that all of our efforts pulled together to help people use the resources that they should have access to through their insurance companies and other resources. That's really a, a big part of what we, we look to elevate. And I know the Coalition's efforts to do training really have, have made a big impact for community health workers and duelists and others to, to navigate those, those complex systems. And then again, depending on the resources available for any group of providers to make the devices available in, you know, at, at hand, right? In the office, that's obviously a priority. And then, and then to see that reimbursement come through. And I think Robin's, you know, mentioned the, the bill that's before, you know, that's being pushed through in our New Jersey legislative, legislative area, certainly advocating for other providers who are able to bill, to be able to provide that same support would be a good note to submit.
The only other option that I know of currently, I know the Preclampsia Foundation I know the pre-eclampsia foundation, their cuff kits do have quite a bit of information in there. So it would be appropriate and usable by doulas, community health workers. There is a cost. And what many states have done and community-based organizations, they have looked to small mini grants because the comment that was made either through our speakers or I read it in the chat, having that kit, that cuff ready to hand to the patient and to actually demonstrate the use is much more efficient and effective than just sending something to them. So I really do appreciate the thought of having it and being able to give to someone. The initiatives that I know of across the country, many of them are through mini grants, foundations, and other resources that have allowed them to purchase.
And I'd like to also just bounce off of what Robyn said with the March of Dimes. We actually started this low-dose campaign in May of 2024. And we started in our states that had the largest births. So that was California, Florida, New York, Pennsylvania, and Texas. And in those states, we received some pretty large sponsorships where they are providing blood pressure cuffs to our community health workers and our doulas and midwives who go into the, and home visitation programs as well, who go into the homes. And NFP, Nurse Family Partnerships is one of the larger I'm sorry, organizations that are helping to support us with this initiative. Unfortunately, we're not here in New Jersey with a large sponsor yet. But hopefully, if that trend continues, we will be in New Jersey soon with a large sponsor that can disseminate the cuffs to our birthing people.
We, we, clinical programs relied largely historically on grant funding to be able to have blood pressure cuffs up already. To Robyn's point about how important that can be to be able to have but also the Helen's and others' points, I think making it easier for individuals to receive blood pressure cuffs through their insurance and really what that pathway is. Also, with Christine, right now, we are experiencing so far, oh no, is my audio lagging?
A little bit of a weird robot echo. Yeah.
Robot mode, I'm sorry.
It's, it's still a little funky. Okay, awesome. Thank you, Lee. Sorry about that. She's gonna, for those who couldn't tell, she's gonna respond to that question in the chat. So look for her response there. I have been trying to track all the questions in the chat, and I believe we got to them all. I think that there are a lot of resources shared too. So we will do a roundup of all of that information that was shared and share it in the post, post-webinar email in addition to the legislation that's been discussed so far. So you have record of that. I'm going to turn it over to Max to queue up our group discussion. And we also have plenty of other questions that we are able to ask to, in addition to welcoming some commentary from all of you. So Max, back over to you.
Awesome. Thank you, Kate. And thank you guys so much for your amazing questions. I feel like I'm still learning so much just through some of the answers that you guys are providing. So this has been great. I do have some general questions for the panel. So any of you guys are able to answer this question. First question is, if you had the ear of every hospital CEO, legislator, and health department leader in New Jersey for five minutes, what would you say needs to happen right now to save lives?
So I'll, I'll take that one. I would say that postpartum care is really essential. I would want them to prioritize postpartum care. It's really a high-risk time for mothers. But yet again, like I said earlier in our message, is that it's often overlooked. We are still seeing mothers are dying in the postpartum period. And we really need more universal postpartum follow-up protocols, including cuff kits like we talked about for those that are at risk of pre-eclampsia and other hypertensive disorders of pregnancy.
Thank you so much.
I would, I would also echo that and just say universal screening for everyone, whether it's postpartum, early risk screening, making sure that every person is screened properly and that the patient information becomes integrated into their electronic medical record so that we can keep track of who is making sure that folks are getting the proper screening they need.
Oh, sorry.
I, can I just?
Yep.
I'm going to double down on Trey Sean's comment. Shakira's is absolutely well taken. But I think we often overlook the postpartum period. And we know that maternal mortality, over 50% of our deaths are in the postpartum period. 27% are in the late postpartum period. We're talking seven to 12 months after delivery. People don't necessarily associate death during that time period with pregnancy, but in fact, that is the case. And we need to really ensure that our birthing people know the importance and follow through with that postpartum check. And then to talk about reproductive health care at that point, not waiting later on. And then to know, continue with those postpartum warning signs because many of those warning signs are directly related to cardiovascular disease and hypertension. And that's what we're seeing. Cardiovascular disease, particularly cardiomyopathy, is one of those late reasons for maternal mortality.
And I want to add to that as well. I think definitely a comprehensive approach and adding on to what fellow panelists just mentioned. I think also expanding our, our thoughts out to preconception. So before, you know, birthing people, before pregnant women get pregnant, you know, making sure that we know what these signs are, knowing what. Are they, Trey Sean, you mentioned this in your talk, you were sharing about what is pre-eclampsia? Do we even know? So just making sure that we have that education available because as we talk about blood pressure cuffs, as we talk about food access, we're thinking about empowering individuals that they have this information in their own hands. So I think that's a large part of this too, thinking about that comprehensive approach. How can we kind of meet it from both angles?
Wow. Thank you so much, ladies. That, that was like a powerful answer from all of you. You know, prioritizing postpartum care, prioritizing understanding people's care, what is pre-eclampsia, all of these things. That makes perfect sense. I do have a follow-up question for you guys. It is another scenario-based question. But if you were to redesign New Jersey's maternal health system from the ground up, with equity as the starting point, not the afterthought, what would be non-negotiable elements? Where do we begin to make that vision real within our current constraints? If you could redesign New Jersey's maternal health system, what would that look like for you?
I'll, I'll take that first again. It's, it's really the implicit bias in anti-racism training. I cannot add enough that it shouldn't just be a one-time training. Every provider, from when you walk into a center to the provider, to the OB, to the ER staff, must receive this ongoing evidence-based training on racial disparities and respectful inpatient care. I cannot stress that enough is that, again, I was dismissed and it, it was solely based on that. So I really need, if we want to really make this vision real within our current constraints, implicit bias and anti-racism training.
I would agree wholeheartedly. I think unfortunately, it definitely is not a one-and-done because the most challenging people are often the ones that don't think they need it, that they are not biased, that they care for everybody equally, which in and of itself is a problem. So I do think we really need to have that within the entire healthcare system from the top on the way down and back up again. But what I'd also say, and I think what's a really good example, is the now universal home visiting program that we have in New Jersey. Here is a program that is available to all birthing people, regardless of demographics, insurance status, et cetera. And I cannot, I'll swing it back to hypertension. I cannot tell you, I, I mean, it's more than two hands. The number of birthing people that we have visited that have had hypertensive issues to the point where just bordering on hypertensive crisis needing immediate medical care and/or hospitalization that they have seen in the immediate postpartum period. So having, having this solidified in our structure with prenatal care, it's incredibly important. There was one comment by my colleague Linda in the chat, and I think it's important to raise. And that is the fact that we now know that if you are diagnosed with pre-eclampsia, if you have hypertension during pregnancy, you are at increased risk for cardiovascular disease, not only now, but in the future. Hypertension in six, back in the day when I first started as a nurse, it was a disease that was thought to only be in first-time moms. And once you had it, you really didn't have to worry about it with subsequent pregnancies. We know that's not the case at all. So knowing the significance of this particular condition is incredibly important.
I would also like to add, Trey Sean talked a little bit up during her presentation about the Divine Nine are predominantly Black sororities and fraternities because that is a community that we really need to work with a lot based on the data. So I'd like to think that the March of Dimes, the Maternal Child Health Consortium, the Pre-eclampsia Foundation, we cannot do this work by ourselves. We really need to collaborate with other organizations that are community-focused, such as the Links and Jack and Jill, some of the other fraternities and sororities, our Places of Worship, and some of our civic organizations. If they can all understand what's going on, the crux of our concerns, the, the issue, and how we can come to an understanding of resolution, we need them to really understand so that they can talk to the community that's most affected by these numbers and pre-eclampsia and eclampsia and cardiovascular disease and so forth and so on.
And I want to add to that point too. Shakira, we were thinking of a very similar thought. Max, your question, it's, it's a larger-than-life question and reconstruction. But I, I don't think this is reconstruction. I think it's just maybe adding on to some of the work that's already going on across the state. But I think, you know, including voices at the table, making sure that community is involved in each section. So if we're making a new program, if we're making a new pilot, how is, you know, where's the feedback from the community in there? How is it integrated into what we do? I think it's so important at the Quality Institute, we're working on a pilot right now called Raising the Bar with two hospitals in Trent Mercer County area. And what we have established are two perinatal community advisory boards. So just as Shakira was mentioning, folks from different backgrounds, different identities and community, making sure that they have a seat at the table so that they can inform different policy and the change that is happening and occurring. So I think that having community at each stage of these processes is critical to development in maternal health.
Thank you all so much for fielding what could only be very large questions to toss toward you at the end of today's session. I also am so appreciative of the many individuals who are participating today who chimed in in the chat and answered these questions as well. And we'll certainly compile those, but wanted to hold space for just a moment for anyone who shared in the chat, if you'd like to come off mute and tell us more about, you know, how you would respond to these questions. I'm seeing some really interesting notes there.
My name is Trina Gibson-Jones. I'm an assistant professor at Stockton University. I think that the last question was very apropos. We have been working with the organizations, Greek organizations, to bring forth information in regards to Black maternal health and complications of birthing as well as viable solutions. So my chapters I've worked with are Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, along with the Links and the Alphas, and also with two different HBCUs as well, as well as a PWI. And so I think that these conversations are critical as well as pivotal in how we respond to the community and get them to hear things from trusted advisors to that said community.
Thank you, Trina.
Oh, I failed to mention, we also partner with the March of Dimes.
Thanks. Elise? Can't hear you very well. Are you able to come closer to your?
I'm gonna try.
Perfect. You're good.
Okay. So glad to be part of the conversation. And I just wanted to add, one thing, I've been working in lead personal prevention for more than 20 years. I've been wanting to run some overlooks research about the impact or connection of lead to Black maternal mortality.
Can I, can I stop? I'm going to stop you only because I, I've had the good fortune to work with Elise on this issue. And maybe you want to turn off your, yeah. So unfortunately, Elise is in an airport and she tends the issue. But what we now know is there's a direct correlation and a connection between lead exposure and pre-eclampsia. This is a fairly, I can't say it's a new knowledge, but it's one that most people do not recognize and know. And you can have been exposed to lead as a child, whether or not you were diagnosed of having been exposed to lead. But when one is pregnant, there is actually a mechanism that allows that lead to be, to escape and then affect not only mom, but also the infant at that point in time. It, and just for the sake of time, I won't go into the exact mechanism. But here is one other opportunity. We know that there are many communities in the state of New Jersey where there are large amounts of lead, not only currently in the environment, but also historically in the environment, as well as a population of people who, if, when they become pregnant, could in fact have had this exposure and then are more inclined to develop pre-eclampsia. So we are now working with legislators to go ahead and see if we can have lead testing be done during pregnancy to identify women who, and birthing people who have a high lead level. And we can potentially either circumvent, circumvent pre-eclampsia from occurring and/or being able to treat it and have some idea knowing the impact. So there are a number of initiatives. And the Southern Consortium is now working with this group, including Isles and Elise Pivnik, along with some folks at the Department of Health, to be able to raise awareness on the issue of lead exposure and its relationship with pre-eclampsia.
Thanks for jumping in there, Robyn. And Elise, we hope you get where you are going safely. Thanks for, for chiming in as well. Max, I'm going to turn it over to you to wrap us up for the day.
Oh, wonderful. Oh, okay. Am I muted? No, I am not. Sorry about that. Oh, wonderful. Oh, okay. Am I muted? No, I am not. Sorry about that. Okay. I just want to pull up a note. So I want to say thank you to everyone who took the time today to join us, to participate, to our incredible speakers. Thank you so much for talking about either your lived experiences or some of the community-based initiatives that you guys have taken and policies that you have worked on to address hypertension and preeclampsia. I want to thank all of the attendees for taking time out to attend. I'm, I think, learning about the AIM bundles and hearing about the child safe birth-like pilot programs and hearing about the initiatives that have been taking place throughout the years in the state of New Jersey provides a lot of hope for people that are interested in birthing and want to see birthing people have a better birthing experience in the country that we live in. And I think New Jersey, given how big the state is, has great opportunity for us to grow in terms of addressing this issue. And if we can address it and make it a better birthing experience for people throughout the nation, then we can make sure that New Jersey's rate and America's rate overall is substantially better. So again, I want to thank you all. I just did want to let you guys know that we will be having a June MAP work session on June 11. We will also be hosting some other events. The Quality Institute has a mental health training and various other events that we will be doing in the month of June. Hold on, I can give you guys the date. So we have a prenatal mental health first aid training. We will also be having a virtual youth mental health first aid training. So there's various different initiatives to addressing mental health, to addressing maternal health and addressing maternal equity. And we just want you guys to stay connected and stay tuned. If you really like seeing our MAP events, you'll love what our MAP event is in June. And thank you again for taking time out of your day to participate in this event. So thank you again.
As you leave for the day, you'll see a survey that will give you the opportunity to share your reflection from today and to give us any suggestions for themes for June. And so we look forward to seeing you all in a couple of months.
Yes, thank you so much.